All right, at this particular time, I'm going to call this meeting to order. At this time, we're going to have a prayer. If everybody would please stand. And Mr. Green, would you mind giving us a word of prayer, please?
Good morning, prayer. Here I go, follow me. Thank you for the day you give us. We'll be asking your guidance and wisdom as we go forward tonight and in the days ahead. You will give us strength and we will go the way you see fit. And we ask some blessings upon our community and country who need it desperately right now. And we thank you for all the blessings that you have provided us. Always, and we ask from your name.
Amen. And while we're standing, do we please just bless the ladies? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, baby C. All right, that brings us down to number four, amendments to the agenda. Add item B under new business, which is item B under new business is a hazardous waste trust fund grant application. We'd like to add that to the agenda. That is, and then add item C under new business surplus bus. We will have a conversation over the surplus bus and we'll explain that when we get to item B under new business also. I need a move in a second. I'll go ahead and make the move to approve the agenda. May I have a second, please? Check. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. All right, that brings us down to Becky's part of the agenda, the employer recognition. We've got three of them here, and I don't think anyone is here. Forgive me if I missed one. We got Robert Olson, management over at the jail, 10 years of faithful service working for the sheriff's department. Don't see him though, 10 lower. And then Jackie Lee Hendricks, Jackie Elaine Hendricks. Jackie Elaine, 10 years of faithful service, also with the sheriff's office. They're not here, and if y'all want to take these plaques with you when you go, that'd be fine. And also, we have another one at the 20-year. This one here is Rebecca Hammond Tree. For 20 years of faithful service to the citizens of Pickens County. She also works with the court. Up there at courthouse. And was standing, started April 10th, 2000. So, we'll thank them for theirs, and we will get these plaques too then. All right. Under the consent agenda, we're going into it. We also did Mark Hinton, the 2020 Golden Deed Award recipient. That was Mark Hinton. That was back in March of '11. The next one was the item B on the first readers' week. Oh, I can't even talk. March 19th through the 26th. It seemed like this year had come down to her. Then we did a proclamation, Child Abuse Month proclamation for the month of April. I have signed it. Mayor Steve Lawrence has not signed this one just yet, but that has been also read in public. Then also, we had another one. Item D, National Public Safety Week. We've had that here in a second. National Public Safety Communicators Week, which was the 911 staff downstairs dispatch. That was done. And then item E, Crime Victims Right Week was April 19th through the 25th. That proclamation was signed at that time and also voiced. And then item F, we had the School Nurse Day on May 6th. Of course, dealing, what we've been having to deal with for the last few months. We missed a lot of the, we didn't miss them, but we all separated out and couldn't have these public items to this thing. But I think they've already been published in the paper as we went through. So, those items have been done. All right, that brings us down to item number seven, under old business. Ms. Lisa, do we have any old business?
There is none.
No old business. All right, that's going to bring us down to item eight, the Carlin Road property. Mr. Landham, you want to talk about the Carlin Road property?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Landham. This is the property that y'all were wanting to, this is contiguous to the fire station that you're building now. The tile work's come back, it's plain, all the plumbing ports, the ports are over. We designed the closing, but it closed.
And Johnny, that was that one acre added on the south.
One acre added on the south.
For the full length of the property to give the park just a little more room to turn.
A little more room to maneuver.
All right. Mr. Barnes, you need a move in a second to approve that.
Sure.
And I will second it. We have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. Land, you got the authority to do such. That brings us down to item B, hazardous waste trust fund grant application. Mr. Justin Kilgore, would you like to do a brief reader digest version of what that's about? Because after these 17 pages here, maybe you can do a little shorter than that.
Yes, sir. This is, the resolution is for the water commissioners to authorize the county to apply for a grant application for funds that have been expended on the Jones Mountain clothes line. And it's just a grant application that we submit to the state for reimbursement of funds already expended.
You agree with that, Dr.?
Yeah.
I need a move in a second to approve item B where we go ahead and apply that hazardous waste trust fund grant.
Sure.
I will second that. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. All right, that brings us down to item C under surplus bus. I was contacted by Lonnie Waters, the wife of Ms. Waters, in regard to a bus that has come out from North George Community Action Agency, one of our MAX buses. We had had an entity at one time. We had bought one for the courthouse and used it to shuttle individuals from the back parking lot up to the front. We've got another one that has been offered to us, and the question is, do we want to buy it? It does have a handicap wheelchair ramp in it. It's got 126,000 miles, I believe. Here it is, here it is, I'm sorry. Blows this place surplus bus we have. It's a 2015 four-wheelchair bus. Mileage is 136,019. Runs good and has no issues. Cost of the bus is $5,500. Let me know if Mr. Jones is interested. I'll have a few days to let GDOT know. These buses are turned in. These are original buses. They were Pickens County buses, and we have the maintenance for them. And Ruth Van had texted us on this one. GDOT just needs to know that they're sold for $5,500. The one we've got at courthouse, Mitch, the old guy's truck's working all right.
It works good. The air conditioning's messed up in it, but you know, there was one occasion that we needed a wheelchair access. We had to take the lady out and just put her in, but she is a potential juror. But other than that, I mean, it's working good except the air.
How many times do you need?
Sir.
How many times do you need a vehicle?
Usually, they're excused from jurors if they're that, but she wanted to come, so we had to make arrangements for her to come.
Ms. Harvey, does there any extra funds that you could spare for if they want to purchase this bus at this particular time?
Did you say extra funds?
Not to say things extra funds, but I'm just.
We could run the funding in your budget.
I'm just trying to think. The Chamber of Commerce was also looking for one for kids down there, 418 Shopkin, Shopkin team, I believe. But if this one, if this one has got a good wheelchair ramp in it, we can swap it off with the one that's back there behind the courthouse and use the one that's got the bad wheelchair ramp for the Shopkin team. What do you think? And then we can do that part. Well, I need a move in a second. Let me check this out, see what we got. And it does seem, seem to be a pretty decent piece of equipment. I could, with y'all's permission, I can call you and call Ms. Diddy and see if we want to go forward with this and if that's all right. Can we do that, Ms. Landham? I would need an authorization probably now on the books to go ahead and purchase it if it's so deemed necessary.
Sure.
All right, I have a move, and I will second that. I move in a second, purchase the bus so deemed necessary if the plan's out and works well, and see if the wheelchair ramp works on or not. So, we've got a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. That brings us down to item 10, under the financial report. Ms. Harvey, I'm going to turn that over to you, young lady.
Thank you. This is the report for the period ending May 31st, 2020. And that's five months of our 2020 budget, so the expenditure should be 41.7% or less. These numbers do include the May 7 budget amendment that was made. The revenues through, the total revenue through May 31st collected is $8,167,931. And that's 27.13% of the budgeted revenue. And then we'll go to the expenditures for the general government. The expenditures are $1,456,499, and that's 35.69%. Then we'll go to judicial. And that is, the expenditures were $1,338,000. The percentage used is 35.13%. For public safety, expenditures were $5,409,827, and that's 37.9%. And then we go to public works functions. The total expenditures for public works is $3,245,580, which is 58.7%. As you can see, the road department is within budget at 41.6%. The solid waste, that $2,150,000, the majority of that is capital outlay costs, and that's a one-time expenditure, and their percentage is 74.8% right now. But the budget should level, that skews the percentages a little bit, so the budget should level out as the, those capital outlays.
And for those, for those that don't know, that's a film, landfill on both sides of it.
No, it's the recycling.
Oh, recycling.
Yes. And we did get a capital lease to fund that. For, let's see, the next one we have is the health department, senior center, and the MAX program. That, those expenditures are $72,443, and that's 25.25%. For culture and recreation, $414,142, and that is 38.48%. For housing and development, the expenditures were $238,481, and that's 28.94%. So, overall, the general fund expenditures are $12,260,973, and that is 40.72%. So, expenditures are about 1% under the total budget amount. For the enterprise funds, the water department expenditures are $732,906, and that's 28.3%. The airport is $185,483, and that's 36.01%. Any questions or comments? I do have a few other things to talk about. The, this sheet that I gave you that also contains the budget amendment. We did have a budget amendment request tonight. But with everything that's going on, the COVID, like how it has affected the revenues and the expenditures, I did a comparison of May, that's the sheet right here.
I'm here, Dr.
May, 2019 to May 2020 comparison. May 2019, the revenues through that period were $6,160,641. And as you can see, the revenues through May 2020 are $8,167,931. $2.5 million of that is proceeds from capital lease. So, when you, when you take out that amount for capital lease, the normal revenue that we would, we could consider that we've collected so far is $5,625,000. And that's $535,000 less than the 2019 amount. On the expenditures, May 2019 through, for May 2019, $10,697,966. For May of 2020, as you can see, it's $12,260,973. But backing out all the capital outlay expenditures, which is 2.171, our expenditures through May this year are $10,89,840. And that's also, that's $608,000 under our expenditures in 2019. I thought that was kind of interesting because even though the revenue's down, also the expenditures were down a little bit from last year.
Kind of also looking at, in fact, looking at sales tax revenues, how they've been increased over the last two months. Could you bring those numbers, will you?
The sales tax revenues are doing really well.
Had an increase of last month of $60,000.
That was the increase from April over March.
Right.
For May, it was about, I think the squash was $26,000, I believe that it increased. I guess we're really fortunate because we don't have the big retail, like the malls and stuff that, you know, have to close out completely. We have grocery stores, Home Depot, Walmart, and then those parking lots are being pulled every time you go by it. So, I guess people are shopping local.
I'm going to see them off, I'll order.
The next item that I have is a request for a budget amendment for the general fund. For the revenues, the sheriff's department has insurance reimbursements for damaged property of $47,319. And that, those amounts will go to their expenditure budget. $32,666 to the detention center and $14,653 to PUPD. The general administration revenue budget, we need to do an amendment for $44,171. And that's for the, that was for a stimulus payment that we received due to the period 19. And that was not budgeted, of course. We also have general administration revenue for a refund from ACCG for payments that we had made previous years through our workers comp for the subsequent injury trust fund. And they are no longer taking the applications for that trust fund. So, we received $44,171 this year, and we should receive the same amount next year. They're refunding that to all the counties. The road department revenue needs to be increased for, they sold some surplus vehicles, three vehicles, and received $16,100. And that will go on their capital outlay line. And they also got a reimbursement for damaged property. It was a, it was a payment for a damaged guardrail. And that needs to go on the guardrail on their repair's line. So, with all that, and down under the expenditures, in mid-March, early April, Miranda senior from planning and zoning moved to finance department to help Beverly with AR and revenues and also to be another backup for payroll. So, I need an amendment for her salaries and benefits for the remainder of the year, and that is around $32,000 total. So, with all the increase in the revenues and then adding the items that need to be added to expenditures, we increased the general administration contingency budget by $54,502. That makes the contingency line right now is $273,139. But that's on the second page that we don't have.
All right. Mr. Barnes, you have any questions? All right, you can, you can. A move in a second. Need a move in a second to approve the changes, but.
Sure.
Have a move, and I will second this. We have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you.
Great, okay.
I'll stay clear of that.
Thank you very much. I have one other item that I'd like to ask for approval on. If y'all know, the county credit cards have been a really, a point of contention recently. And we have available a reimbursement system where if employees or whoever, if they need to purchase online, if they need to be trained online, or they, they just have to use a credit card, they can use their own debit or credit card and ask for reimbursement. That puts the responsibility or the obligation on the employee to get, to do the reimbursement form, to get us detailed receipts for the purchase. And it takes the, really the responsibility or the obligation from the county until we receive that and we approve the reimbursement. So, I have talked with Becky about this, and I talked with the county attorney also. I also checked with some of them from the board of education. They have, they have almost twice the number of employees that we do. They do not have one credit card, not one more edition credit card. I would like to ask the board for approval. Allow me to cancel all the county issued Visa and MasterCard credit card accounts affected immediately.
Mr. Barnes, you got the conversation on that?
No problem.
No problem. Need a move in a second to approve. So, I will second that one. We have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. And if you can, I will cancel them as soon as you leave this meeting. All right, that brings us down to item number 10, under action items, under approved minutes. We had a call meeting on April 2nd, on April 2nd, 2020. I need a move in a second to approve that I have read through these. I did not find any additions or anything that has been put into this.
Sure.
Got a move, got a second. I will second that. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. All right, that brings us down. We had a call meeting on April 13th, 2020. Same thing. I've read through these and didn't see any need for any changes. And we need a move in a second to approve these, please.
Sure.
I'll second, have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. All right, we had another call meeting on April 17th, 2020. Same thing. The conference, we had an conference on that as we did with these other ones. Need a move in a second to approve these.
Sure.
And I will second, have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. All right, we had a public hearing on May the 7th, 2020. Same thing, stands, very short meeting. I need a move in a second to approve these minutes.
Sure.
Have a move, and I will second that. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. All right, and last but not least, we had a call meeting again on May 7th of 2020. Same thing going, the meeting was called to order at 5:15. Meeting was adjourned at 5:25. I need a move in a second to approve those minutes.
Sure.
I have a move, and I will second that. We have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, nobody saying aye? None of those, thank you. All right, that brings us down to item number 11, guests and comments. We are going to open up this time for any guests, or getting comments from the guests.
I actually do have something.
Sure.
I heard that you just canceled all the county credit cards.
Definitely.
And that is due to there was some contention lately, and I believe that was due to some situation with somebody that's no longer employed with the county and due to some financing practices that weren't across the board equal as they should have been. Receipts weren't always kept as they should have been. So, now all the credit cards for the county are going to be canceled. So, our agency only had three or four, I think, and I'm not sure.
Five.
Five. How many were across the rest of the county? But instead of ensuring that the practices were held the same across the county, they're all just going to be canceled as soon as you leave this meeting. Is that correct?
I'm going to look at them in the morning, and if there are pending charges, they will, they will be honored. But yes, after that, we'll.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were clear about that.
There's an avenue for reimbursements.
Okay.
That way, we're sure that we get the proper documentation before we do the reimbursements.
Okay, so you're going to make sure the proper documentation is obtained from all departments within the county now?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Because that, when the reimbursements are requested, the county isn't obligated whenever the charge is made. When someone's using the county credit card, the county is obligated to pay that.
Correct.
That includes, yeah.
Right, and they should only be used to buy what county purposes.
County purposes.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Any further comments?
Let me, I'm sort of slow with these. But, okay, so you, you're requiring employees to purchase on their card? Say if you need an item, like a blue light or whatever, so I'd have to buy it on my credit card, then get it, receive, send you a receipt to get reimbursed. So, otherwise, every purchase has to do PO that takes along the process.
Which sometimes we do have to wait weeks to get.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's really, we're, we're taking a step back on purchasing, so.
Will the PO process be sped up to?
If you let me know, if any PO that you waited weeks on, I'd like to have that information.
Okay.
Because those girls work on POs every day. As soon as they come through, they're usually done that day. So, you let me know if there was a PO that took that long, and I'll find out why.
Okay, we sure will. Thank you.
So, and of those receipts, if people turn those in, Ms. Harvey, are we going, is there going to be more strict policies put in place? I know if you're going to take away an avenue for, like, an office to operate, for example, so I'm assuming you guys are going to start beefing up your verification process of purchases to prevent some of what we just saw on the paper.
Like, in your agency, what will happen is whoever uses their credit card and put in the reimbursement form, someone in your office will either approve it, either Jeff Hall, I guess, or the sheriff, and they send it to us, and we double-check it. If everything's the way it's supposed to be, then we'll do checks on the tip.
And are we going to have an, because let's take, let's take a detention officer, for example. Let's say that we have to send them to JCP, right? A detention officer makes $13, $14 an hour. What, no, let me finish, please, if you don't mind. But I'm just saying.
We always send checks with them.
Well, but what I'm saying is they have an expense that they have to, like, whatever the expense may be if we do that, is it going to be an expeditious reimbursement? Because we need to remember that a lot of the people that work in this county are working at wages that are pretty low, so they're, they need their money back as quickly as they can. They can't finance the county, of course.
And they have the responsibility to get those forms turned in to you, make sure they have all the documentation, turn them to us, and if you need expedited, let us know, and you know we can expedite checks, right Mitch? We did one this morning.
Mitch was here this morning when we had to check, we need one right away.
I mean, we do everything that we can to.
Well, we bought used vehicles, we're trying to save money.
Right.
Good.
Okay, awesome, great, thank you.
I very appreciate that.
Yeah.
The, also, don't we go ahead, if y'all are going for training, we'll go ahead and pay $40 at the time and do that also. Anyway.
Okay, Brazilian?
Yeah. I can understand about training. I'm thinking about, like, little stuff that breaks, and you have to get quickly.
Like if your auto's on, for example.
You still have the Home Depot card. The Home Depot card is not a problem, the gas card, the wax gas card.
Yeah, which gas card is not a problem. You'll have your. Yeah, well, it's gas card not a problem, you'll have, you'll probably still have your NEPA stuff there, so.
And we have a council with all the, the local vendors.
Yeah, local vendors, we have a council with.
Sure.
All right, any other further comments? Well, ladies and gentlemen, y'all have a great weekend. Good to see y'all, y'all stay safe and keep safe distancing as we still go through the virus issue. Thank y'all. This meeting is now adjourned.